Good evening, I call to order this regular meeting of the Monument Town Council, Tuesday, September 2nd. Please rise for the pledge. Do you take role? There you are.
Mayor Lakine?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem King?
Here.
Councilmember Abbott?
Here.
Councilmember Chronic?
Here.
Councilmember Kimple?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
And Councilmember Furito will be attending when he-
Okay, so since our attorney is not here, council members, if any staff or council members put any disclosure or conflict of interest in. And we'll move on to our agenda and consent agenda. Any modifications to the agenda? Right scene, now I'll look for a motion.
Should we stop the meeting? Agenda, sorry, the agenda.
Second.
Give a motion in a second.
Mayor Pro Tem King?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimple?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Lakine?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic?
Yes.
That motion passes six to zero. Up next, we have Resolution Number 56-2025. And as I am understanding, Mr. Ungaliter, this motion is to be continued?
That is correct, Mayor.
To what day?
To our next meeting.
September 15th?
Yes, please.
Okay. Do I have a motion to continue this to 9:15?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Ms. Erickson.
I couldn't read for a second. Mayor Pro Tem King?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimple?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic?
Yes.
Mayor Lakine?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. All right. It's four minutes before. All the comments for items not on the agenda, individuals attending in person may raise their hand to indicate their desire to comment. Individuals attending via Teams may raise their hand digitally to comment via connected devices. Please lower your hand when finished with your comments. Comments will be limited to three minutes. Is there anybody here in our makeshift town hall that would like to make a public comment? Yes. Get different glasses, is that Haley?
Good evening, Haley Chapin with TriLakes Cares. Just wanted to take a moment to remind everybody that September is Hunger Awareness Month. This is a big month for campaign awareness, for the work that we do. As you know, one of the main critical items that we supply to the community is food assistance. And our pantry continues to see more and more families seeking services day after day. We hit another record two weeks ago. So we continue to see increased need and we are going to expect continue to increase with the changes that are coming down from the federal administration. So this month is important for us to raise awareness, not only that hunger comes during the season of cold weather, going into Thanksgiving, Harvest of Love, and food drives, but that we take drives all year long. So to raise awareness for hunger relief, we are asking community to wear orange or wear their orange ribbon. So I will pass around a bag for you to take an orange ribbon, and I encourage you to wear that throughout the month. And when people ask, you can share with them your support of TriLakes Cares and the work we do to combat hunger in northern El Paso County. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry.
Good evening, Teri Hayes with the TriLakes Chamber of Commerce. Just wanted to let everybody know in 18 days will be Bines &amp; Brews Beer Fest is downtown Monument. It is in Lambok Park. It is one of my favorite festivals. The event does benefit the Chamber because it's one of the things we do to help support all of our good work that we're doing, but also part of the money goes to Silver Key because they helped start this whole event. So that's why we have made sure that they have been supported all along. So tickets are available, trilakeschamber.com. There is a little poster in the center that lets you know where to get tickets. They're only 25 bucks and it's four hours of unlimited tastings with unlimited water and sodas because that's the safe thing to do for everybody that's drinking. And I want to say we have a lot of non-alcoholic beverages this year because we want to serve everybody and their tastes. So if anybody has questions, let me know. Otherwise, hope we'll see you in 18 days.
Thank you. Anybody else here that would like to speak? Anybody online, Will? Okay, we'll close public comment. Future agenda, item authorization?
I don't have any firsts.
Will, you're picking us all up, right? Sorry? Any council comments?
I would like to thank Public Works, the awesome job they did for the water main break on Buffalo Valley Path. It was handled beautifully, professionally, and the residents who were doing wine on the picnic table enjoyed it thoroughly. Thank you.
I think we have our next fundraising activity idea, that when Public Works is out there, we should sell tickets. Okay. Strangest meeting we've run. There's no other comments, I'll look for a motion to adjourn the meeting. Move into our study session.
Make a motion to adjourn.
On favor?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned. Need a break? Good? Staff ready? Okay. And who's running the show? Oh, it says right there, Jennifer. All you. One second. Like us to go back through the minutes at some point to just record that that was a nine-minute meeting.
All right. All right, we are ready. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City of the Town Council. My name is Jennifer Phillips. I'm the Finance Director. And I'm here this evening to propose, to present to you the proposed preliminary budget. Can everyone hear out there? Got to be right into it. All right, here we go. So the point of tonight's presentation, pretty bad. The point of tonight's presentation is to review this preliminary budget. And one of the things you'll notice is there's no financial documentation to this presentation. There are some highlights and there's some overview of financial information, but this is not the deep dive into the proposed 26 budget. This is the preliminary look to see where we are and to seek guidance from the council on where we need to go to be able to balance not only the 26 budget, but to address our structural deficit that we are now seeing for the town. So what I'm hopeful is, as we go through these slides, that there's conversation between the council, among the members, but also among the department heads and your executive staff that's here. Ask us questions, dig deeper, and try to figure out together how we're going to solve this structural deficit. So what we're going to go through tonight is to review your priorities. And this is how we're starting to put the budget together. This is the reason that you have your priorities, because we can't afford to do everything. I'm going to walk you through our process to date, then we're going to start to go through the general fund. And I've talked repeatedly that the general fund is really our main source of revenue and how we support most of our expenditures within the town. We're going to go through the other funds because it's still important, and then talk about some budget reduction options for the council to consider. So again, your strategic priorities for reminder and review. And then we are starting to build strategic objectives. And so those will be presented to you sometime in October, and those will be how staff moves forward to accomplish your strategic priorities. They will be included in the adopted budget. We're also going to be preparing performance measures that will be included in the 26 adopted budget. We're also going to see accomplishments will be added in. So accomplishments for '25, you're going to see a much more detailed budget book that will come to you in November. I don't know how to do this any better. Maybe if I put it. Okay, a reminder that we have 10 funds, and again, the general fund is what we're going to focus on tonight, but we are going to review the other nine funds. So for right now, projected revenue for 2026 is $14 million. And again, this is based on assumptions to the best of our ability. '26, at least in my career of over 30 years, is probably the most unknown projection assumptions that I've ever made. We just don't know what '26 is going to look like. And so in my opinion, we've tried to be reasonably conservative, but not over-conservative and thoughtful on how we're projecting revenues. So you can see we're projecting $14 million in revenue. Our assumptions are a 2% increase over 2025. Now remember so far, the 2025 sales tax is down 12%. Property taxes increased 2%. We are reducing our investment income because we are spending reserves. And we have increased the allocation from the water fund to the general fund based on a cost allocation plan. So in prior years, it was more of an estimate, and this is actually based on data. So this is how it's broken out, and you can see how important taxes are for our community. Now here comes the problem. Expenditures for 2026 are 14.26 million. So despite our best efforts, right now, we're $260,000 over budget. So we're spending more than we're making. And you can see that salaries and benefits are a large part of our budget. One of the things you'll also notice is we've slashed capital and maintenance for 2026 to help us reduce our expenditures. This is not good public administration, it's not good financial management, and it's not a good way to take care of your assets. However, to try to reduce expenditures in 2026, that's what we're doing, is we're postponing the purchase of capital, we're postponing our maintenance. So based on what we have so far, we're anticipating an ending fund balance for the general fund to be about 21%, and that's within the council policy. And then at the end of 2026, the projection is again around the 20%. The challenge that we have is that if we do nothing and we continue with this status quo, we will continue to move towards the negative. So if you look at the 2026 budget, and you see the 14 million in revenue and the 14.26 in expenditures, we are not balanced, but close to balancing in '26. But if you take '27, and I've put in modest increases because costs just continue to increase, and I've put in modest increases in revenues, you see that we continue to go into the negative. And so at this point in 2026, we're at a crossroads where we can, we have to stop doing nothing. We have to do something. So as a reminder, you adopted fiscal policies a few months ago. I'm just going to read a few that I think are very important as you're thinking about this budget. The operating budget will be based on the principle that current operating expenditures, including debt service, will be funded by ongoing revenues. To be very frank, you haven't done that in the last couple of years. You have been using reserves to balance your budget. But now we've chewed into the reserves, and so this is why we need to be more thoughtful as we plan for 2026 and beyond. The fund balance, you have a policy of an upper goal of 20%. We are achieving that if we follow this plan for '26. But as status quo, you will not achieve that in the following years. You also have a policy to endeavor to establish two additional funds, an emergency reserve and a budget stabilization reserve. And neither are established nor funded. What I can tell you about 2.07 is if you did have a budget stabilization reserve at this time, those would be monies that we would be using now to stabilize this budget so we didn't have to make the drastic cuts that we're making. So the idea is, over time, to establish this budget. So for the next recession, we can stabilize the budget and more smoothly move through a recession than have to do the drastic cuts that we're doing now. Asset, capital asset, so the town is to establish and contribute to an asset replacement fund. We have started to do that. So there's $500,000 seed money in 2025, and there's $600,000 from 2F, which is a designated revenue, needs to be used specifically for police. This in no way covers the asset plan that we need to have for this organization. And these charts tell you why. So for Public Works, you currently have 26 vehicles that immediately need to be replaced or in very bad condition. So what we would need to do this year in '25 is spend 1.1 million replacing those vehicles, and we are not. So that means that that obligation will carry into '26, and we're spending no money on replacing any vehicles in '26. So this problem only grows. Same with police, you have nine vehicles that are well past their useful life, and three are bad. We are going to try to purchase two more this year using 2F money, and we'll continue to do that. And we have put some money aside in the 2F restricted reserve so that we can start to purchase those vehicles. But as you can tell from these two charts, we have not been investing in our capital assets from a vehicle standpoint. There's a whole nother list of equipment that also needs to be replaced, and we're working, you've never had a capital asset plan. That's something we're working on and we'll be presenting to you as part of this 26 budget. Any questions on that part so far?
So can we go back some of the slides? Just to better understand the reserve status, the emergency funds? Where do we stand at now?
You have, you do not have them. You've never had them. And so the policies that you passed earlier this year was to endeavor to be able to start to establish these. So to establish them, we would need to start to designate money to put into these two reserves. And we are not doing that in '26.
So you're saying we don't have the money in the new reserve accounts? But previous years was reserve?
One more time, I can't hear you.
There were reserves in the previous years.
There, you've never had an emergency reserve or a budget stabilization reserve. You've had a general fund reserve.
Okay.
And you've had reserves in the designated funds. But this would be general fund monies in addition to your reserve that should be put aside to increase the town's financial health.
But we have, we have reserve funds.
Yes.
Where do we stand with that?
You're at about 20%, which meets your policy of having 20% general fund reserve.
But you're saying, and you also said that in the previous years, that that reserve money was used-
Correct.
-to balance the budget.
Correct. So if you look at 2025, remember when we did the presentation in November, you used, I want to say, 2 million in reserves to balance the '25 budget?
That part I remember. It's the previous years, I don't remember being told we were using reserves for regular operating expenses.
I believe you did in '24 as well.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm on the same page as Mitch. We were, previously, we had more rosy budget presentations. And, you know, and it seemed like there were funds that didn't make it into the next budget, which is unfortunate because I don't feel like we were getting a realistic look into what was going on. And that's water under the bridge because it's other people that aren't here anymore. But, you know, now we're all hands on deck.
You also had much larger increases in sales tax. So when the state, when the legislature passed that sales tax could be collected at the source of delivery for online purchases, you saw a significant increase in sales tax. You had a couple of years where it was 12, 18, 20%. And then in '24, it dropped, 24, 20? In '24 it dropped, yeah, '24 dropped to 2%. So those were the years to put monies aside instead of spending everything that you had. Those would have been the times to start to build some of these reserves. Had that been done at the time, like a budget stabilization reserve, those monies could now be used during this financial crisis.
Yeah, and I'm not disagreeing. We were just told different things. Or we were told nothing. So now we're trying to figure out what to do.
And then the funds that are, that we have investing, that we're getting return for investment, where, where are those funds going to?
That is actually a complete misnomer, how it was sold to us originally. That investment money is actually our operating budget daily. It is not, it was not a nest egg as it was made out to be. I, I get that the effort that was put in to take advantage of the interest rates was spectacular, but that was how the town has been actually operating. It was not, you don't have an extra 10 million floating around like it was made out to be when it was presented to us by our previous town manager and our not-to-be-named-ever-titled CFO.
So you have, ooh, you have various funds, and each of those funds have reserve, in particular, the water fund, right? And so you're in, you're making investments, and those funds are receiving the revenue back for your policy, and that was good financial management. The funds earn the interest, and that interest stays within the fund. The 700,000 that we're projecting for '25 in interest, and for, and for '26, we're projecting 600,000, that comes from the sweep account, which is the daily operating account. It would be very difficult to identify which funds those are designated to, and so every night, we just sweep the interest into the general fund. But there is no magic fund somewhere with money sitting. The investment accounts are specific to each of the funds.
And we're still trying to get to the point where we can have impact fees, other things that could-
Yes.
I mean, as additional revenue that would go into a bucket for future needs.
The challenge with, that we're having with the impact fees is that we don't have planned projects. And so impact fees are for the impact of growth on the community.
Right.
And until we do some long-range planning, we can't charge fees on projects we have in. Has to be a direct nexus between what you're charging in an impact fee to a project. So I don't think that that's going to be a large influx of cash because the projects just aren't there right now.
Right. But it's, it's ongoing, it's part of this equation.
Yes.
I mean, we've got two ways of doing things, fees for revenue or reduce expenses. And we're not selling widgets, so it's all tax money one way or the other that revenue source.
So the fee, the fee study that we started, so we have the impact fee study, we have the fee study. We just finished the cost allocation plan, which is why we were able to increase the allocation from the water fund by $400,000, which is really helpful in the 26 budget. We could do that, again, based on data, and this cost allocation plan study, which we never had in the past. And then we have the fee study. So we are taking steps to increase those revenues as appropriate.
You're saying that Public Works has 26 vehicles that need to be replaced? And the police have nine vehicles-
Yes.
-that are over their-
Yes.
And you're talking about purchasing. Have we looked at leasing against purchasing and then or purchasing-
Purchasing.
-newer, used vehicles vice brand new?
We haven't done any analysis on that. I know that we leased some police vehicles, and generally, that's not the best business plan. But as we move forward, right now, there's no reason to do anything because we don't have the money.
Right.
But as we move forward and we look at opportunities to purchase new vehicles, there's nothing in '26, and I don't see how we do anything in '27. But we would certainly analyze all of those options.
Well, and the good thing is that, you know, cars are tremendously better than they used to be, so the lifespans aren't as bad.
But all that's calculated, we don't, we don't make up those useful lives. They, the better, the newer the vehicle, the, right? We calculate that, all that in. 20 years ago, you know, it used to be six years, now it's much longer. But the repair of those vehicles is getting far more complicated because of the electronics behind it. And regardless, PD, I mean, they just put massive amount of miles on their vehicles. So, and we have to be thoughtful towards our mechanics as well. At some point, some vehicles, they, you're throwing good money after bad. But we take all that into consideration. We would never replace a perfectly running vehicle because it's at its useful life. If it's running well, we would continue to use it. There are other vehicles, we have a couple in the police department that are actually younger, but are dogs, and they got to go. So we'll keep the older ones longer and get rid of these ones that are just a massive headache for both police and for the mechanics. All right, so now I'm going to move into the part of the presentation that highlights each of the departments. Now again, it's very high level, there's no detail here. The idea is to share with you any notable changes, but, but most importantly, what's impacting each of these departments. And we're eager to hear feedback about things we could potentially do to continue to reduce expenditures. We feel internally, based on the guidance from the town manager and as a leadership team, we have cut as much as we can. You're aware that we have laid off- You're aware that we have laid off six individuals and that is not included in this budget. The total cost savings for those six layoffs is about $500,000. So will be maybe $200,000 in the positive. Again, this is a preliminary budget and it's not the fix for 27, 28 and beyond. And I don't even know, once we finalize the revenue projections, once we finalize expenditures, if we'll again be balanced. So it's, it's been a very difficult week, this last week for this organization. So we, as a leadership team, along with our teams, have tried to identify every cost savings that we can think of. And now we're, we're asking you for additional feedback because there are things that have a direct impact on the community that we really need to know, whether that's something you can live with or something that you can't. And so we've done what we think we can do internally and now are looking for feedback from all of you. So the town council budget, you can see we've reduced your travel and training. You have one option potentially to avail, to reduce your budget and that would be your community sponsorships. You can see them listed here. And right now, what you've sacrificed in your budget is the ability to expand your knowledge and build regional relationships because your travel and training budgets have been reduced. And I'm happy to stop at each one, if you just let me know.
So on the travel and training, I understand cutting the travel portion out, but is there potential to do online or remote training? That doesn't cost?
Some still do. So organizations who have normally put these trainings on, that's part of their revenue. And so you're seeing nonprofits charging for online training because their own budgets are struggling. And so there still might be a modest cost. There is still some travel and training in the budget, we've just cut it a bit.
Reduce it down, yeah. And then the reduction for the community sponsorships, is that the recommendation to be made to temporarily suspend those sponsorships until we get healthy?
Well, we are not recommending this, we are seeking your guidance on this. This is your policy decision.
Personally, I would say on the, the training end of the budget for council, I mean, there's, there's nobody here that probably doesn't understand, uh, going forward. Since we've been, we've been here for a couple of years anyway. I would be fine with seeing that. I tend to not vote into many of those anyway. But I would leave that up to everyone else, but I think you could slice some there. Sorry. I would be fine with, with, I don't know about eliminating, but for sure reducing the training budgets for council personally. I don't feel, I don't feel the need.
These are primaries, primarily like CML events.
So what we left in this budget was the CML event and some of the other, like, smaller regional meetings that you would all go to. So, but there was some significant other items that had been put into the council's budget previously that we haven't been doing for the last year. And so it was, like, we, we were able to do our retreat for basically no money. And so we would look for those kind of options. But those are the kinds of things that we took out is there was money and therefore a council retreat, a council dinner, like an appreciation dinner. So those were the kind of things that we reduced. But there would still be the CML and I think primarily those kind of meetings that you would still be able to attend since those are important to your position.
So CML would be the biggest one probably, right?
Correct, yes.
So I talked to Kevin Bommer today and informed him of the position that we were in and, and not only did I talk to him about the probability that we would not be seeing next year at most of the events, including the annual, but I also questioned how much they're charging us as membership to CML. I would look at that. I don't know if the membership is worth, worth it for the year. Because there's a built-in 3% to 5% based on our, I think it's our population. I would look at that number and we can maybe talk about the benefit we get from CML. But if, if we need the money, then that's one that goes, as far as I'm concerned. There's only a few of us that have gone to the conferences. I know the next one, the, the last one caused some online consternation about us going to learn about proper governance because it was in Breckenridge and I would have preferred it to be more local anyway, but they always pick out these, these other places to go. This year, it's in Westminster or tw- next year, it's in Westminster, so not as swanky as Breckenridge. But the other, the other question I have about that on the previous slide, where you show that the council's budget being 144 minus the 25,000, which does not include CML. So I would like to see that number inclusive of, of CML. But also, because the, the district ones, we're going to go to if we're still members of CML. Because they're 35 bucks, right? But if you go to the, the, the next slide in there and you, you take out the 62,000, what's the rest of that money that's tied to the council?
So it's, there's kind of a percentage of like supplies and things, like, yeah, allocations. I can't think of any other significant, it's like PPACG, membership, insurance.
Insurance for us?
Yes, for.
Liability insurance?
Yeah, so allocation of the, of SIRS.
Okay, so PPACG, they're going to ask for more money this year again. And.
I believe we already have that number too.
But, but that's for next year.
For 26, correct.
And Fountain Creek Watershed, they want more money. We're not required to be a member of any of those groups. So I think we need to figure out by talking to their leaders what, what the loss is. Now, with PPACG, I know there is significant grant money at stake. And we've, we, we got grant money this last year for Jackson Creek.
Jackson Creek Parkway, yeah.
And Fountain Creek Watershed was important too. But I think we should look at the numbers, but if there's even a potential for next year us receiving any funds also, before we decide if we're going to give that money up for joining the club. If we have to skip a year or two, see how it's going to harm us.
I don't see this being, any of this stuff being permanent. We just need to, until things turn around and, and revenues are back up, you know, we just go where we need to go and cut what we need to cut.
Now, we can, we can present more of that information to you in future budget meetings.
Okay. Okay. And so that should wrap up the, the delta between the 25,000 training, the CML annual training and the 62,000 in community sponsorships? Is, okay.
Now, for the sponsorships, there has been an organization that would like to make a presentation to council. We could also ask them to present to our citizen service level committee if you would like as well. Because we're, we would have to either do that as a special study session or at a different council meeting.
They want to do it today?
No.
Oh. Well, if we let one do it, they all do it.
Correct.
So schedule it for.
Do you like the idea of it being presented to the citizen service levels committee?
Any other comments about the council's budget?
I, I'm just wondering about, like I said, the, the sponsorships, whether or not they get paused or significantly reduced as the options? Just for the, and I said, you know, it's not permanent, it's just for us to do a course correction and get the ship headed in the right direction.
I, I kind of agree with council member Kim, but let's, I think we need more information, especially on the travel. Next best budget, that we can, I think we should trim as much as we can there first. See if, maybe we can just trim the sponsorships a little bit.
I don't get travel, we, we don't really get, we don't get reimbursed for travel. I don't know how many people have like.
Yeah, honestly, I mean, I, I would think, looking at what we're looking at here, that we just allocate enough budget. If there's any events maybe that the mayor needs to be at to represent Monument, I don't know if there are any important events like that other than that.
Yeah. I, I mean, I also like how the recommendation of not doing the retreats and that kind of thing, that just, it's not needed. We can, we can hold a meeting here within the town.
Yeah, we can do the retreats local and free like we did the last one.
Correct.
Yeah.
Right.
Need to go to Westminster.
Yeah, and personally, I don't see any reason why we can't take a pause on some of this. We're having to make really difficult decisions and across the board. And unfortunately.
Are you guys focused on the 62K or all the whole fund, the 140, what was it on the other side?
44.
44. I, I just wanted to know what the, I would like a more detailed accounting of this. So the council can know that, okay, this equals a membership. Then we can trigger on a, a further discussion on what we get from it. And if we decide as a council to X, X out CML per year, then call Kevin and say, sorry, you won't see us at all at anything.
Yeah, I think, I think, I mean, if we're, if the difficult decision has been made to release or to have six people laid off, we need to seriously look at further reduction on what, on these two slides.
Oh, and where's our lobbyists?
Tell you the what?
The lobbyist would also be in this budget as well. The lobbyists, the PR firm, I think those are the two things, the lobbyist and the PR.
But even that could be paused as well.
The, the lobbying part, I.
What have they done so, what have they done thus far?
Do they do for us?
No, what have they done this far?
Well, they meet with us on a weekly basis during the legislative session and we are assured that our support or denial or modification of state legislation that's going to impact the town specifically, along with Fountain and Woodland Park, are brought to the attention of the elected representatives. And it also gives us insight, because we sit in these meetings every week, as to what the state is doing that can impact the town of Monument, both financially or our existing ordinances, land use decisions. It's sort of important, but I think if Fountain and Woodland Park are able to go it alone and we were to pull away, they would still keep us informed, we just wouldn't have a vote.
PPACG also has, has some representation legislatively and they, they will give us the information too. But I think those two services, the lobbyists and the PR firm, if, even if we take a pause at this point, I think it could do us some harm. We need some continuity there, my, my opinion.
Well, the good thing about the, the lobbyist part is we're splitting it three ways. So, I, I mean, and I don't know what all we're spending on that.
It's roughly $1,500 a month and the price didn't go down when Woodland Park joined.
Really? It didn't?
That's my question, can we bring someone else in?
We're not getting rid of Mr. Munch.
Yeah. No, I mean, can we bring another municipality in to help us share?
It depends on how they align with the three municipalities already. Like, we would not bring in, let's say, Manitou. We did reach out at one point to Palmer Lake and they were in a position to participate. And I don't think they had the interest at the time. But if the price isn't going down due to the split, it doesn't matter how many more we add. So I could reach out to William and, and talk to him and see what. But, but I would put it on the list of things that could be itemized to check off and.
I have a comment about the community sponsorships. I don't, I'm having some heartburn reducing some of those. I don't know if Terry can speak to the 25K and maybe that's another evening. But I feel like that, that those funds help our community. And that going away, 62K, it's like a drop in the pan. I don't think it's enough to say, oh, that should go away or be put on pause. I'm, I'm struggling with that. Everything else, I'm, I'm open to finding out more in terms of reducing the budget on like the town trips or training or any of that stuff as well.
Yep, totally understand that. But if you start, as we start to fill back the onion and start to add up, it. Oh, I know it's one piece and we're, we just started with, so we have how many more?
I need more information, yes.
Well, we can have the presentations to the CSLAC and then we could also try to bring the presentations to council too. It's just running a little bit short on time. So we might have to look at a special study session for that.
That's fine with me. You want to move on to the next grouping?
And so this is extremely helpful. This is the kind of conversation we were looking for. And, and I know that it's, you don't have the detail. But for us to put the detail forward and you just start to grind through the weeds, get you too into the weeds. So we really just need this kind of feedback to say, okay, when, when we bring the draft budget back, you'll see these choices and you'll see these numbers and you'll see the impact. Okay, so the next one is town administration. This is a uniquely large budget because of the money that's, for Triview is actually put in the town administration budget. So it's, I just highlighted that so it doesn't look like the town manager has a $4 million budget. It's much smaller than that. Noticeable reductions, you'll just notice that we transferred ARPA money out. That's why you'll see some changes. So one of the things we're looking for is feedback on potentially reducing town hall public hours because we do have reduced staff now, reduced customer service and we're trying to reduce operational expenses through the consolidation of duties and elimination of redundancies and that has to do with our layoffs. So areas of sacrifice, because we're going to have limited staffing and we are all taking on more. There will be a reduction in our ability to participate in some committees and maybe lost opportunity with building partnerships and some of the things like that. We might have to reduce the number of projects or extend some of the deadlines because we physically will not be able to deliver the volume of projects that might be expected. And then we're also proposing a reduction in executive leadership salaries. So that would be, we would generally, we would try to reduce our hours. So salaries would stay the same, we'd just be paid for fewer hours.
I would like to see, and I, I know this is Herculean and maybe it's not possible. But I think it would be good information to take each, each one of those items, the reduced town hall public hours, for example, and, and quantify it. Probably can't. I mean, there's not an absolute number, there may be a range. But if, for exam, just that one, for example, if you reduce the public hours, what are you really reducing? You're not reducing heating, air conditioning, all that because the building still has to be lit and, you know, and all that kind of stuff. So what, you know, what's the number associated with that? And, and some of the other thing, some of the other items as well.
It's, it's really, it's not a, it's about workload. So there's only one individual who will be responsible for the front counter. And when that individual is not there, that means that higher level staff will have to come down and work the front counter or if the front counter. will have to come down and work the front counter if the front counter's opening to five. So you're losing efficiencies, you're losing the opportunity for individuals to continue to work on their assignments when they're, I mean, it's very difficult to work at the front counter. I mean, I can go down and I can work there, but I'm not going to be as productive for that hour or eight hours as I would be on my own desk. But that's where we're talking about is we're just physically not able to deliver the level of service that we were able to deliver a month ago.
How do we, how do we quantify that?
It's very difficult to quantify.
And you see where I'm going with it. You know, when you, when you start talking to the public and you say, you know, we're reducing blah, 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 and they come back and say, well, but, how much could you, how much are you really reducing it if you're not doing XYZ? Because everybody has their own perception of what, what the service levels should and could be and how much dollar values associated with those. So somehow we've got to come to a narrative or something that explains some of this, you know? And I know that's, I'm just throwing it out there because I think it's hard.
I think it's extremely hard and I think what's happened is this organization has, has grown and it's added services it couldn't afford. And the revenue has not grown with the level of service that's being provided. And as a result, you have to reduce the level of service. And the answer to that question of reducing Town Hall hours is you've laid off a full-time person who was working the front counter.
And we've, we've identified, here's the baseline services that we're supposed to be providing. That's been, that's been identified.
Well, that's the challenge, right? So you go back to the history of, of local government. It started with streets and roads and buildings. And then they passed the sunshine laws, very important. And some community programs. And then it was other supportive programs and it was, so what is the fundamental service? Is it public safety? Is it streets and roads? Is it events? That's what each town, each city has to decide for itself. What is important to this community? And so there is no, there is no book out there. There's no guideline to say these are the fundamental services of a community. You look at Manitou Springs, you look at Fountain, you look at Monument. Each town will have its own definition of what critical services are. And that's where we turn to the policymakers. You have to tell us what are the critical services that absolutely have to be delivered. We obviously have some, we have to take care of our roads, we have to deliver water. But above those, what, what isn't absolutely necessary? Does Town Hall have to be open at all? Don't know, right? Maybe it does for the police side. You have to have in-person water billing? Is that a critical service? You have a box outside, you can call, you can go on the website? Those are questions we can't answer from a policy perspective.
But you, you bring up something like water billing. It's happening everywhere where everything is going automated. Federal government just came out and said that the Department of Revenue will no longer send paper checks. So if you don't have direct deposit, you will get a cool federal government Visa debit card or something, something like that. What have we identified what the savings would be? To be fully automated in all electronic payment formats for anything we're collecting money for today so that, not that I want to eliminate a position at the front counter, but short of it being an emergency, we stop taking paper and processing it. And, and either you pay via a e-check through your bank, because every bank has bill pay and almost none of them charge anymore. Or you pay via a Visa debit card or credit card. Or if you have to drop a check in, into the box. But even that, why are, are we accepting bills at Safeway and King Stupers for utility payments? And because other places do. And is there any benefit to us investigating that service so that people can go pay their utility payments while they're grocery shopping?
So I can tell you that the vast majority of payments are made online. So we're very efficient that way. Utility billing position is heavily geared towards that monthly billing. So that, that itself can't be automated. There needs to still be a human behind that of running that billing, getting everything going, right? But we are moving in that direction.
It's through Casell, right? Casell, Casell can do that?
It's through Express Bill Pay and Casell, yes. Yes.
I was researching again of what Casell's features were. Specifically, when I was looking at the packet, how to further automate things. And it said the Express Bill Pay.
Yes. Yep, that's, so we're looking at all of those things. Those are going to be really important tools for us as we move forward. We're doing the same thing with, and we'll get to that, GOVOS, now that we have self-collect sales tax running well. Lori actually said today, the beauty of GOVOS. I know.
So that's, that's working out?
That's working out much better now.
So is that, is that a big positive? I mean, I know we're still kind of a little bit in the trial period as to whether or not that, that is beneficial or not.
It's, it's beneficial for a variety of reasons. One is we have a lot more information. We never had any information. So we know who our businesses are. We've been able to identify some businesses that are delinquent. That's information we never had before. It's not a huge cash cow, but it is, it is a very beneficial move at this point. Lori's done a fantastic job with it. The other module that we already have and we're paying for is business licensing. So that's the next thing we'd like to explore as a customer service and another online is you do your business license at the same time that you do your sales tax. So these software packages, they can't 100% replace someone and, and they're, they may not eliminate needing people in the future, but in the short term, they're very beneficial and we need to use them to the maximum ability with our limited staff, yes.
What about, there's that, also there's that, an asset management program too? How was that?
Cardiograph? So Steve on my team and Connie from planning have been working very closely with Public Works. It is now up and running. For it to be effective, it needs a massive amount of data to be input to it. But we are working on that. And so when it's up and running, it again will be a very beneficial tool because we'll know every part, every piece, every sprinkler head, every bench, every car, every piece of every part that we need for the vehicles. And so that's, it's, it's a heavy workload to get it in place. But then once we get it in place, it should reduce the workload and make things more efficient.
So then that's really detailed. I didn't realize it went into that much detail.
Yes, it's, it's an asset, a full asset management program, yes.
How long have we had it?
I don't know when we bought it.
I want to say it was the end of 2023. Does that sound right to you, Tom?
I'm thinking either late 2023 or early 2024.
It's been being prepared to be used or it's been functioning and just takes a long time to upload everything?
There, there were some changes in staff. And so Steve from finance and Connie have jumped in middle of '25, I want to say, and, and really got it up and running. But it's going to take some time. It takes training, it's a change of behavior, right? It's doing something new. It, it feels like it's more work on the front end. So the crews that are already really busy feel like, oh, this is more work. But once we get everybody on board, I think we're all going to find that it's actually very beneficial. It's just going to take a little time.
So like the sales tax program took a bunch of time and.
Yep, we can have therapy with, with Lori.
Therapy with Lori.
For a question.
Anybody that would take that on is.
I know we had six layoffs, but do we, is there something online? Like an org chart or all the flow down for each of the different, like finance, each of the different, like many organizations? Is there something posted like that or is that something you can share with us?
We'll have an org chart in the budget, but I don't know if there exists one today. I assume there is, I don't know.
There's one, it's in our HR system, so we'd have to figure out how we can export it.
Okay, that'd be nice to share at least with the council if you can. Thank you.
All right, anything else on town administration?
The, oh, yes. As far as the leadership salaries go, the executive need to confirm how that would done, be done because she's under contract and you would have to approve it. As far as regional meetings and, and committees, I think the council needs a better understanding of the professional memberships that you are all a part of. Because the last thing we want is not to have certain opportunities. Maybe it's an alternating year kind of thing. But at the very least, I wouldn't, I would not want us to lose critical communication coming from these organizations that you associate with, like, for example, the clerk. I don't want her missing anything that's coming down, especially after legislation decides they're going to do something, mess with how the clerk works. So a better understanding of what those organizations are, what they cost every year, and you letting us know if it's, if it's something that, yeah, we can skip a year. It won't, won't be a problem.
We, we are looking at what is critical when we are looking at training and development because we want people to keep their certifications. That's really important.
Right, we can't have Public Works or even police, if they have cert, do you have certification?
Yep.
So we were really mindful when we looked at travel and, and education and professional development.
Okay.
So it's, it's interesting in a financial crisis, often leadership will just axe professional development. And it's, this council and this executive team and our town manager made a commitment when we brought, when we brought forward the compensation plan, that we had all the employees in, in this median in the market, that we would continue to invest in them. And so professional development has not been slashed. It's been thoughtfully reduced.
I'd so like to understand what those things entail.
Oh, you absolutely will. But just so you know, that falls under our purview of professionalism and making decisions about what's right for our staffs.
Also, except for we either want, we're going to be the ones that approve the budget.
I understand that.
To do that, so I want to know where the money's going.
I'm not, I'm not.
It's blanketed before us before and it's not going to be again.
I'm not arguing with you. I'm just letting you know that in our professional opinion, the budget that is now the preliminary budget includes the reductions that we think are appropriate. Absolutely, we'll have that detail in November. I'm just assuring you that we've looked at those things and we've already made a lot of those decisions.
So also with the, I see on there the reduction in executive leadership salaries. Tough conversations, but I understand it. So everything's on the table, but has it also been discussed about freezing all other salaries except for like the cost of living allowance?
That's all that's in there is the cost of living. It's a 2% increase right now. There, there's no merit. So again, we made that commitment as part of the compensation plan. If, if we freeze salaries and we do that for a year or two, you're going to be behind in market.
Yeah.
And so we want to try to stay within that market.
Yeah, that's the next part that I was going to is this, if it is a freeze.
Right.
What's the cause and effect of that with recommendations of how long before we start to fall behind?
Right.
When we just started to gain some.
Correct. And we made this commitment. And so that's, so again, for, for the executive leadership that's going to take a cut in pay, the overall salary range will not change. It's the number of hours we'll be paid for working. So instead of being paid for 40, some of us will be paid for 32 and still work whatever we need to work to get the job done.
I mean, I'm glad we've been able to increase these up to market rate.
I, can you?
I don't want to go backwards.
No, we don't.
But, you know, we got to be able to pay it too. So it doesn't do anybody good if the checks are bouncing.
Yep, that's why at this point we included the 2% salary increase for the CPI. That's all. And again, that's, you will see the budget and those will be decisions you can make. And you can give direction that that can be removed or increased. What we're presenting to you is a preliminary budget to the best of our professional ability that we think is reasonable, but still isn't balanced. And that's why we need help. For the clerk. So pretty much the same, real, no real notable changes. Again, this is customer service, impacts on public hours and trying to be more efficient from an operational standpoint. Areas of sacrifice are very similar. Reduce support to businesses, reduce level of service, potentially slower response time. And the workload will go to other employees within the organization.
I think the one thing we'd have to be concerned about is statutory requests to come through as far as timing goes. I don't anticipate that that would be problematic for our staff, but obviously.
Make sure they can hear you.
Statutory requirement for clerk, that process, requests that come in for like QARA, those have a statutory timeline.
Yes, they do.
And that means that other non-statutory requests that come in would be delayed in order to accommodate.
Potentially, yes.
Okay.
The bulk of the work, unless it's specifically related to the clerk, the bulk of the work responding to those kinds of requests fall on the departments. So the clerk will receive the request, pass the request, like, let's say it's something with finance, pass the request on to finance and finance will carry the workload of compiling the information to then respond to that request. So finance. We do have some reduced costs. Our audit came in lower than expected. Casell expenses were also, are also lower than expected. So we have a little bit of reduction in our budget. So some additional areas of sacrifice. We are taking on additional duties from other departments. We are doing some, some form of centralized purchasing. It won't be 100% centralized, but we will be taking on bulk purchasing, Amazon purchases and some other areas like that with existing staff. We're also going to be creating a centralized grant administration. Revenue generation needs to be a priority and so I'm not touching anything. Even took my bracelets off. And so we're going to focus on grant administration to see if we can achieve additional grants for the entire organization. And there'll also be a reduction in executive leadership salary.
You've got some, you've got somebody writing grants right now, right? Cassie, is Cassie writing grants?
Cassie has been writing grants. She primarily focused on parks in the recent past, but she'll be more looking at the entire organization. So she might be looking at grants for police officers or other organizations that might benefit our organization more fully than just in Public Works and Parks.
How much of a reduction in, in grant money is, is out there right now? Is this like a 50% reduction or is it?
I think it just depends where the grant money is coming from, but there is a significant reduction in grant monies. But there is some still out there to be sought.
Thank you.
We have human resources. The significant reduction in human resources came because we had $100,000 that aside in the '25 budget for an ADA study. So one of the areas to consider would be employee benefits. Areas of sacrifice, we still are not filling and have eliminated the human resources risk manager assistant position. So your human resources department is still a department of one. We have eliminated the wellness program. We eliminated the tuition reimbursement program. department is still a department of one, we have eliminated the wellness program, we eliminated the tuition reimbursement program. As we just talked about, we, we are limited on additional training and growth opportunities, we're limited on position-specific trainings and certifications, limited supervisory training and aid with succession planning, and, and we are looking at a reduction in the employer match of retirement contribution.
Again, that would be temporary, that wouldn't.
That's at the direction of the council, I mean, temporary is a good thought, but you have a structural deficit. This goes on and on and on, it doesn't end. It's not like we have one bad year and then everything's going to pop up in '28. This is ongoing. And so it's really hard to say that, that you can put a pause or do some of these things temporarily because there isn't adequate revenue to cover this level of service and benefits.
Or is there a pathway forward to, say we pause all this, I use the word pause? And then bring back some of them, like tiered or by, you know?
I think that, that's a great plan, I think it depends on where the revenue is.
It's gonna be brought back when it's presented in years' budgets, right?
Would, right.
It's not a pause, it's gone. I don't see us restating our budget every three months or every six months for the purposes of unpausing something because they can't operate like that with.
I'm not, I'm not saying that, I'm saying, saying like annually.
I, I hear what you're saying, I, I think that there are so many priorities between the asset replacement, between trying to set monies aside. There just isn't the money.
Wellness program, is that your typical add-on to the insurance where there's mental health services available?
No, this was like the YMCA memberships and other wellness benefits that were offered to staff. So we, this would not, the mental health benefits comes under our medical benefits, so employee EAP and things like that.
Still have EAP.
Okay, I would, I don't, I think I remember what the rates were for here. Another place that's about to open up and they're offering all sorts of specials. I, if, if employees were taking advantage of it and they were actually using the benefit, I would, I would rather them be healthy, you know, have an opportunity to participate in something. Maybe we can look at that. So there's places we can cut elsewhere, but give them opportunities for something different.
Well, we, so here, the challenge was our public safety officers, the time doesn't work for them. They have limited hours here, and so we did try to expand the program to include local gyms that had broader hours. For exactly that reason, but again, these are things we felt were nice to haves and, and not must haves. We're, we're absolutely looking for your direction, if this is something you'd like to see us put back in?
I think you're on the right track, I mean, I, look, I for one, really appreciate what you've been doing since you've been here. Because we haven't had this, these kind of really hard conversations in the past. And it, the town, you know, prior, prior to most of us being here, was, seemed like it was running based on new development that was coming. And I had always figured it needed to run more like it was built out. But, yeah, I mean, all these are going to be hard decisions and hard cuts and my wife and I, we retired a couple of years ago and we slashed a bunch of things. It's, it's just, you know, what you have to do to survive.
Yep.
So I do, I really appreciate bringing all these up and that you've dug deep into the weeds to figure out what to do.
Thank you.
We are looking at other community partnerships that we can make, so I do know that the fire department has offered to our police officers the ability to use some of their facilities. So we're, we're having those conversations as to what we can try to provide for our staff without having to really take that hit out of our budget.
Things like wellness programs really came into existence, I think, large corporations because they do see a direct benefit and savings in healthcare costs, right? I don't think we're big enough to see a benefit from that, honestly. Yeah, I don't think we're large enough to see a benefit from a wellness program reflected in our healthcare costs. So I, I would, I would think that's something that would be fortunately, easy, easy, you know, easy, easy pickings, if you will, easy to trim off.
Do we see any savings in healthcare? I don't think we do.
No.
I think it'd be really hard to quantify that because of HIPAA.
Cause, yeah.
But is it possible that we, is there any organization of smaller municipalities that band together the purposes of cost savings to make us look, and appear larger?
Those are, those are some of the options that we have been looking into with our benefits. I don't know that that's an option for us, but I do know that's, we are looking into other ways that we can manage our benefits for our employees a little bit better. I'm just not sure what those answers are going to be yet. I do know that our current health saving, our current health care plan does offer some healthy choices, benefits. So we try to get that information out to our employees that are part of that medical plan, so there are other options out there.
Okay. Next.
Information technology, you'll see a small amount of savings, very appreciative of all the work that Will's been doing. Renegotiating, re-looking, looking at equipment, getting rid of old equipment, making sure we have the right amount, not too much. And so that's where that salary, that's where that savings is coming from.
What's the expense to the third-party contracting IT company?
I'm sorry.
What's the expense, the annual expense for the IT services company?
I'm gonna say it's $160,000, split between water and, and general fund. Sound about right, 160? It's basically one person, if you were to hire a full-time person and you're getting very broad, it's, it's a envision, right? It's a, in my opinion, it's a screaming deal.
Asking.
Yep, I think it's 160.
Did they renegotiate this year or how many more years we have left on our contract?
Uh, Will has renegotiated it again.
Yeah, and I've actually got them, actually got them set down to reduce it, PC is not actually assigned to a user.
I, that, let's not get into the weeds, I just want to know, where is the new contract for us to see?
It will be coming up renewed in, in May of next year.
So was it renewed May of this year too?
Yes, it was.
Did it come before us?
It's just a renewal of the three-year that was signed.
That's something that we should be approving as the council because of the dollar amount, not an administrative task. So I expect that when it comes up again, these kind of contracts, per the purchasing policy, come before council. Because that 160,000 was completely out of our purview. But I am glad to hear that they are, it's a smoking deal and I'm glad that everybody likes working with them, I just, transparency on these contracts, please.
Understood. The other areas of sacrifice will be a reduction in executive leadership salary. Moving on to the court, there's no significant changes, there was a reduction in, in staffing expense, so every time a position is open, many we haven't filled at all, and I've mentioned that on numerous occasions. There was a position open for the court and it was reduced in classification for cost savings. And there's nothing further to consider for the court. For law enforcement?
Is, from the court, can you go back to the court? Is there a way that we have to have a court? Is that statutory, that we have to have a municipal court?
Yes.
Never mind.
Yep.
Kind of offloaded on the county.
So for, for the misdemeanor and the areas that fall within the purview of the city or the town, we need to go to our municipal courts.
Okay. Is that, well, because we, I don't, that's our spend, I mean, we're not, we, we getting any money that covers it?
Doesn't cover, it's not cost recovery, but there is revenue that's generated by the court fines, fines and fees.
Okay. Trick needs your right word.
Okay, working into law enforcement. So as I've mentioned on numerous occasions in 2025, public safety held three police officer positions vacant to support our ability to balance the 25 budget. And so information was provided by the chief on what could potentially could be considered. At this point, the way the 26 budget has been presented to you in the preliminary form, all public safety positions, both civilian and foreign are funded in this budget. So if that is not your desire, then we would need direction that, that you would like something changed in that. And so these are the things that the chief has, has identified and are for your consideration and further discussion. So the three police officers are funded and we would like to fill those. Right now, there's two police service aides that are vacant, but they are funded in the, in the budget. And then an executive assistant, that is also vacant. But the chief has needs, not so much as an executive assistant, but in other areas to support the police department. Areas of sacrifice, the chief will say that there still needs to be five additional positions on top of what's currently budgeted to really have an ideal level of staffing. You can read the other areas, so we still don't adequately address emergency operations, we are working on that. But it is our obligation to be prepared for mitigating disasters, be prepared for them to respond and recover in the event of an emergency. At this time, there's no proactive code enforcement that is funded and code enforcement is basically performed by the police chief and planning director. One of the big needs is a secure fence around the police vehicles. And then there'll also be a reduction in executive leadership salary.
So I've been hearing about the secure, secure fence since April of 2020. What I've never heard, and I'm not saying it hasn't happened, is that our police vehicles are being vandalized sitting there in front of town hall.
So that, that's actually not the biggest issue we have?
Okay, so what is the reason that we need secure fence around the police vehicles?
Okay, so there are times where we bring detainees into our facility through that parking lot. And I can't have an officer trying to focus their attention on someone to bring them into building and having to deal with anyone that could walk up behind them. The other thing is we have rifles, we have other gear that are stored in our vehicles that are just a window break away from taking. Now, it hasn't happened, but I'm not willing to wait for it to happen.
What is, what is today's dollar for a secure fence?
$62,000.
Tomorrow's dollar?
$63,000.
Okay, I'm, I'm tired of hearing about the, the lack of security for the police. So I don't know about the rest, but I've been hearing from citizens, police is not to be touched. So if the rest of the council is in agreement, I want to see the, the 62,000. If it means that it's filling some of the gap of un-staffed people sacrificing, then let's get the damn fence so it's not on the chart next year.
So what Tom Tharnish has offered to do, since we do have a water facility and on that site, that if we were to enclose that as well with the fencing, we could defray some of the cost of water.
I thought you were going to give crossing guard uniform.
That's later in the presentation.
Okay, and if there is even, if there's a way to help fund it from, from water because we need to protect that too, then let's get it done, let's get creative.
Understood, very helpful.
Marco, you've been, you've been sitting there coming back from the airport for a couple of hours, are you in agreement with what we're talking about here? I want to make sure you're covered. He did come off mute.
I think Will's working on that, but I, I agree, Mayor, that I think you should make the fence a priority. Chief brings up some excellent points there, there.
Before the ground freezes.
Yes.
I couldn't hear, sorry.
We need to put the fence up yesterday.
I've never worked at a town hall, city hall that didn't have a secure police vehicle facility.
We all want key fobs too.
I can get you fake ones. Fake ones.
Get you a fake one. Let's leave them outside in an unlocked box.
All right, so moving on to planning. The planning budget is reduced basically because, I didn't put on there, there was a large grant this year for the comp plan. So planning is fully staffed, hooray. They don't need any additional, don't have a place for additional reductions, their areas of sacrifice, they're unable to provide land use code enforcement, reduced ability to build regional partnerships, limited proactive economic development activities because we're just so short-staffed, and also there'll be a reduction in executive leadership salary.
Does, does the revenue cover the budget for planning?
No. Not even close. We'll get there, I mean, we're, that'll, the fee study will help. And so that's what we'll bring to you in a fee study is full cost recovery. So that'll be part of your policy decision is, you want to charge for the full cost of everything that planning does. So if you do, then we'll get closer to having that cover the costs. But today, the fees are so far behind, it's not even close.
Yeah, the fees have been far behind for a long time.
That's an important revenue source for this.
Right.
Is that going to be another look at the school in lieu of fee? Also.
That wouldn't go to us.
Um, there is, we are doing, we are conducting with our consultant EPS, a Nexus, or Impact Fee Nexus study, which again, will bring a level of, of impact fee changes that you'll have to take a look at and, and again, make policy decisions. And to make sure that we can do the capital investment program that you, that you want, that the community wants and, and needs. Schools, parks, trails, emergency equipment, there's a whole, a whole slew of different types of, of impact fees that we're going to be bringing to you to review and determine if that's something that you want to take on.
Yeah, but I was looking for something specific, a couple of years ago, we did a study, raise our D38 approached us, raising their, in lieu of fee, instead of land for a school from a developer, it, it was money.
Well, it's, it's going to be based on, on land value and very, very specific objectives and that'll increase it automatically. We'll be working with the school district as well to make sure that it works for them. It's not our money, it's money that we turn over to them.
I, I get it, my point is that the county hasn't changed their fee since, and if not for decades, was it 300?
They're, they're actually following suit on some of the initiatives that we have going on, the county is, they're looking at the same type of things that we are, so and we'll be working with them and hopefully influencing some of their decisions in the future so that we're all on the same page and that we're supporting our government entities, we're providing services to our residents and business.
Okay, we can talk about it. It doesn't impact us, I, I just, because we were talking about planning and fees and it goes through planning, I wanted to figure out a way. Because it's, it's been a couple of years since it's been bumped up, since I haven't heard the county is doing anything. Whatever remaining homes are being built, we should bump the fee up on, on the developer to go towards D38.
Well, but in all fairness, because they're, they have a declining enrollment, that only, all that money can only go towards capital improvements. So I don't know, even know if that's a beneficial thing for them, we'd have to. We'd have to check with the school district.
Brand new center that requires capital improvements for technology. And it's part of it, right?
Some of it.
Just, never mind.
Also, council member, Fiat Richo is having problems on his end. So, but he said he was, he was in agreement with the rest of council about the PD's security fence.
All right, moving on to public works. So public works is divided into four areas. The first is streets. So one of the things I mentioned very early on is we have very limited capital equipment purchases. Which is, again, we're extending the life of some of the equipment that really should be replaced. But we're doing that to be able to help balance the 26 budget. We've also done some, we're reducing expenditures towards their uniforms. One of the things we're doing now is we're privatizing some services. So you recently approved a contract for engineering services. And so we believe there's an opportunity to be more targeted and reduce expenditures through some privatization. We're also looking at things like reducing snow plowing on main roads or routes to school. Sorry, reduce snow plowing only to main roads and routes to school and maybe plow other roads during normal working hours. This is some of the feedback that we need, what's really important to you? What can you live with and what can you not? Areas of sacrifice, there's no money towards a new public works facility. We have a complete inability to fund Jackson Creek Parkway. We are distributing work from public works to other departments. And again, there'll be a reduction in executive leadership salary.
So we, regarding snow plowing, one thing I do know is that as far as school bus routes and things like that go, they call snow days because El Paso County doesn't plow, even though our roads are clear. So it doesn't really benefit the school. So I think that there would be an opportunity to, you know, maybe follow El Paso County's guidelines or get close to those. I mean, I think they're at six inches right now before they plow. And we had talked when we purchased some new equipment that, I don't remember exactly where this went, but we were going to see if there was some way we could combine that with TriView in any way for some stuff that they might have. Is that something that's on the table or even an option? That would probably be a Tom question.
Oh, we have not consulted with TriView as far as trying to combine operations, but it's definitely something we could look at.
So do you know what, because TriView has their own plans too, right? Know what their schedule is?
I, I don't know how many pieces of equipment and what their current policy is for plowing their roads. I don't know if they have a primary secondary route system like we do. They do, they do something to that.
Is there any, is it worth investigating with the county that they would pay us to plow roads that they can't get to?
We can ask the question.
In order for schools to function safely and not have kids stranded, there was a couple of times last year where because of how El Paso County couldn't get up, their kids couldn't get out of school, parents were stuck, you know, for hours sitting there on, on roads. Is there a benefit to have some agreement with them where they would pay us to do the work? I mean, we're out anyway, right?
Yeah, we're, we're out a lot more and that's why we're pretty efficient at doing our roads. And we all know the problems with the county because we're at the very end of their, their system. So yeah, if we could, I do have contacts there we could talk to and see if that's something they want to talk about or not. We, we do have current snowplow IGA agreements with them to cover roads that come through our town. But they take care of some roads on, on our end. So it's a, in fact, it's an agreement that's due probably within the next month to renew. It's, I think it's what, every three years?
All right, moving on to facilities. You'll see a reduction in facilities because we had funded, budgeted this year for the Vergey project. We are eliminating the window cleaning service. And again, we're reducing uniform expenses.
Can you talk about the window cleaning service? Is this, is this between 259 and town hall?
Yes, that's correct.
And they just show up and break out a squeegee and hang off the side of the building, that kind of thing?
Yeah, specifically at town hall, it's difficult to get to those very tall windows in the front. So that was primarily what we were using the service for.
I'm, I'm pretty sure we're going to bring our pressure washers and start volunteering, start spraying down the building.
As long as we don't increase our risk.
Fine waivers.
So we talked a little bit about cardiograph earlier. So part of our reducing redundancy and trying to do a reorganization, cardiograph will be one of the keys to be able to do that so that we can more efficiently manage our facilities, how we're maintaining our facilities, when we need to do repairs and how repair requests come in. And so we're hopeful those, those IT efficiencies will support the changes that we're making in facilities. I believe that there'll be a lower response time for facility maintenance. I think we all need to be a little more thoughtful. Can't just have immediate service if something doesn't work. We're going to have to be a little more creative and self-help to be able to support the reduction in facilities. For fleet, budget is, is pretty much the same. There's no real notable changes other than, again, we reduced uniform expenses. I think the most notable area of sacrifices, we are really on the verge or already there in need of a third mechanic. Because we have continued to add equipment and we continue to add vehicles and we still have two people. And that is not funded in this budget.
I'll be honest, I didn't know we had two mechanics.
One works on vehicles and one works on equipment.
That's their full-time job?
Yes.
And that's off of Jefferson?
Yes, and they are busy.
Can any of that be contracted out? Or has that been looked at?
Yes, we, we do send a certain percentage of the maintenance work on the fleet out to local contractors just because the workload gets pretty intense. Because you remember, we're, we're maintaining a fleet of police vehicles in addition to regular public works vehicles. Then in the winter, you got the additional work with the plow trucks, sanders, things like that. So yeah, we do, we do farm out especially maintenance that is labor intensive, that takes a couple of days to work on. I, I can't have one of the mechanics spending days on one specific vehicle because things just pile up inside of it. But we do farm out a portion of that.
So is it enough being farmed out that it would be justifiable to hire another person or?
Well, there's some, based on a workload and some cost savings in the future, that would be a long-term approach to bring on that guy, even if it was a, not necessarily a full-fledged mechanic, but a maintenance tech where they could take care of the oil changes and lubes and things like that. Leave the two fleet and heavy equipment mechanic to work on the tougher issues. The bigger issue associated with that is we just have no room, no room to work. We have one lift for 70-some pieces of equipment. So the time on the lift is very critical. So sometimes you start something, you have to stop, pull it down, put something and has a higher priority back on, get it running.
Yeah, this building is the biggest problem, probably.
Yes. I can't remember the square footage on it, but it, it's not very large. And that's a whole, from, I guess we're going on probably eight years now trying to get a facility built. That would be large enough where we could have more than one bay, more than one lift.
Also, can something be possibly worked out with TriView? Does TriView has maintenance people?
I, that I do not know. Don't really communicate with them on a public works operation perspective. I know they have a shop, a smaller one off of Jackson Creek, but I don't know what their workload is or how many pieces of equipment they have.
So one, one of the challenges we're going to face in 2026 is our ability as a leadership team to do some of these investigations and do some of these cost benefit analysis. Again, we'll, we'll work what we need to work. But this leadership team is cutting its salary. And so if there are these kinds of projects or these are some of the things you'd like us to look at, we need to be very thoughtful in the workload that we can handle in 26. Because we're all picking up work, more work, just from the layoffs and just from the challenges that the town is facing in 26. And so we just, as you think about some of these ideas which are excellent, we have to also be able to manage what we can handle in the sense of being able to work on.
Well, from my perspective, I'll take your lead on that because we'll probably ask things. Say, no, don't be shy. You're not shy, so I'm not worried about you. But the feedback is going to be important.
We're gonna, there's going to be times we're just going to tell you that we're not able to do that. Or, or what do you want us not to do? When, when you look at your strategic objectives that'll be coming to you in October, those are the conversations is you're going to set your priorities and we're going to work on those things. And as things get added, we're going to either ask you, what do you want to give up? Or is this so important that you need to add it on top? Because we're not going to be able to do it all.
And I appreciate that feedback.
And then there's parks. So there were some changes in parks. We did, we did eliminate already the $70,000 for seasonal staffing. This will have a direct impact on the staff in the summer and on their ability to maintain the parks. We reduced, again, capital equipment purchases. And there are no trees or plants budgeted, including the downtown flowers in 26.
Is there, this seems like not a very risky operation for having volunteers. Is there a way to do something like that?
So for, for the downtown flowers, that's, that's becoming more common. It's something that we'll look at, but again, now you're looking at a whole nother project. So then we say, okay, we're going to have volunteers do that, but someone needs to manage it. Someone needs to corral the volunteers and say, who would like to do this? Who'd like to sponsor a bed? Who'd like to sponsor a flower pot? It needs to be managed, it still needs to be watered. So it's not just walking away and saying, okay, we're going to let the town businesses and volunteers take care of this. Someone still needs to oversee it, otherwise it's going to be worse than doing nothing.
Right, would it help to have a parks committee?
A parks what?
A parks committee?
Probably not at this point because that's another added workload. Because someone has to staff and, and meet with the parks committee. I think that's something we'll work with Cassian to see. There's, there's successful programs out there. And so right now, we haven't budgeted it. We're going to look at options and we'll be able to bring some ideas forward. What I need, what we need tonight is, is that a, is that a something you can live with? Is that a must-have? Is that a nice-to-have? Because those, those are the things that are going to start to really show in the community. The downtown flowers are beautiful.
Right.
And so they have an economic impact. And so we need to know, and here's your next list. Eliminated the contract for the Christmas lights, that's $25,000. There was a bottom trailer.
You did eliminate it? It's actually eliminated?
No, I'm sorry, it's not eliminated. Is it in or out? It's out, oh yeah. Christmas lights have been eliminated. The bottom trailer, which is the only piece of equipment that Public Works is asking for, is actually very helpful in supporting their work and, and saving their backs. And so that is still funded in this budget. There is a shade structure that's funded in this budget and the stairs are still funded. Do you want those funded or do you want those out? And those are through the general fund. And then another, other ideas were to eliminate or reduce pest and pesticide contracts and reduce mowing and leave more of the parks native-looking. Some areas, all areas of certain parks. Those are things we need feedback on because if you, if your feeling is absolutely not, the parks have to be perfect, we need to know that. If you're okay with some parks maybe going native, we need to know that.
Well, again, with, there've been a couple of suggestions for specific things that volunteers could do. And I think we've, we've talked about this or I mentioned it, Larkspur does adopt a tree. So for the Christmas tree situation, you know, have the businesses adopt a tree and it's their responsibility to decorate, lights, whatever. So that could help with the budget and still maintain some of the visual that everybody goes for.
And it, and it brings community, but someone still has to manage that program, right? So we don't have a volunteer coordinator. So they're great ideas and if that's a priority, then right, we have to figure out where that falls.
Can you explain the bottom trailer again?
The bottom trailer is for loading between a truck and.
So it's a live bottom trailer, so it has a conveyor belt ultimately in it. It's a big, so they, when they're putting new mulch in flower beds and stuff, they can dump a whole pile right there and then they can smooth it out instead of having to go shovel by shovel and unloading a trailer by itself.
And, and this is something that we want to have, that we don't have?
Correct.
And is it something that's leasable per job? Rentable?
We haven't looked to see if they're rentable or not. We priced different options with different, you know, add-ons to it, but we could look into rentals potentially.
What, how many times would you have probably used it this summer? Sorry?
We would use it almost on all the beds in the parks.
And so how many years have we not had one of these?
We've never had one.
So this is to a health benefit?
Right, so that's the thing, right? So when we look at our workers' comp, sometimes we need to invest, make sure that we're keeping our employees healthy. One worker's comp complaint.
It's already in the budget for 25?
This is currently in the budget.
For direction. Seems like something that's going to help them in the long run.
No, I see the benefit in it. I would, I would like to see it kept in the budget.
Would like to see it kept in the budget?
Yeah.
Did you say keep it in the budget? Yes.
Yeah, you can keep it in the budget and go get it before they raise the price.
Right, right.
Okay, same with the fence.
So the, the lights, the Christmas lights, which will be sad not having, and the shade at the lake and the stairs at the lake, I think for me, it's a pretty, cut that out.
The Christmas lights though, I want to understand better because I've been involved with businesses before that do municipal Christmas lights every year. And it, it's not just the trees, it's more of the whole town, right? We don't do the whole town, we do our trees on second. So we don't own these lights, these are leased?
So it's not all of the lights. So it's the lights on Second Street, we do own and we maintain those. So these are for our bigger trees in Lavallette Park, Limbach Park, that we were hiring a contractor to, to decorate. Our public work staff or park staff does have lights that they can do some decorating with. It's just those bigger trees, we did contract that out.
Okay, so the lights and the labor was the 25,000. And so for the holiday season, you would have those lights installed and that's the 25,000.
Correct, we would still have, to have the big trees done, we would need the 25,000 for the contract. But we would still have small Christmas decorations or holiday decorations and the Second Street lights sort of, depending on how much of them have been ruined by the rodents.
Does that include the Christmas decorations by Lavallette Park?
So those, we, we have those, those were donated to us and they're, they're just a, like a wooden scene.
I didn't know if that was part of the labor. I didn't know if that was part of the labor. I'm fine with putting a pause on the Monument Lake, the 10K for the shade structure and installing the stairs. For now. If, if we did away with those two, I'd be okay with that for now.
The Christmas lights is one of the biggest community events aside from the Fourth of July. I'm not going to be on the council that kills Christmas. I mean, just it's a non-starter for me.
So those would have to go back in?
Yes. No, what? James, come up.
We could do without the trailer.
You're speaking for the all Public Works. You're willing to give the trailer up for a year?
It was basically parks and the flower department that was going to use the flowers or use the trailer. And what it does is it eliminates the use of four guys unloading the trailer, takes it down to two. So two guys, even one guy could operate, unload the same trailer that it took four guys to unload before. But we've done it and we'll keep doing it the way we're doing it now. So I would rather see the trailer go away and we could put that off for another time. I mean, that's a lot, a lot more money. So I'm pretty sure that's how my guys would feel too.
So you're saying you want the lights?
And I don't want to kill Christmas.
He wants the lights.
You want the lights, James?
I do, but we can also do them. We have some lights. They're old. And we haven't done it for four years and they've been in storage. So there's a lot of repairs that need done to them, but you guys have seen our lights before we did it. Two years ago was the first time we had it done by somebody else. So.
So this has been done before by you?
Before that, it was always done by us, all of the trees.
Much, what's the time to do that? Is that like several days?
It's a lot of time. It, it takes, because we don't have, we don't have the same type of lights that they had. So they have, they have really expensive, they're really far apart and just kind of alternate them up, up the tree. We have to, we have to wrap them around the tree. And we have, if there's, there's always a windstorm right after you put up the lights.
Right.
So you've got to go and redo them all after you do them. And it's usually freezing cold and that's besides all the other duties.
So it's.
I'll say, you stand up. But me and James actually talked about it this morning about the trees. He mentioned that we could do it ourselves. At least maybe cut out some of the stuff that our contractors come in and do. Because there are some trees at Limbach that we can do. We've got a brand new bucket truck that we can do them. But when it comes to the big one, you probably see in front of Limbach's bathroom, that's where those ones get tricky. So, you know, that's something we can talk with you guys about if you guys want us. You guys are like contractor, costing us too much money and we have to go out and do them. You know, drop security, but you know, that's, we, we don't want to kill Christmas either. We like when Santa turns on the lights even though it's someone else that does it. But, uh, yeah, like that, that's what we've been talking about as well. We were even thinking about starting to do it next week if that's, if that's something that we had a get going with. But obviously it's starting to slow down with mowing and now I don't think we're getting as much rain anymore. So, which is helpful. So we don't have to go out and mow every single day. We don't have summer hires anymore. So it's something that we can, you know, maybe discuss. So that's something we've already started to discuss, but yeah. I just want to put my two cents.
Appreciate that.
Yep, thank you. If you feel like your team can do it, and I am happy to volunteer my time. I'm sure other council members would too.
I don't have a bucket truck, but I'll help.
Oh, well.
Sorry. We've been working on those. Not putting them up. We have a whole, I don't know if you know where Pioneer Hall is at Lavallette Park. But we've got all of our stuff stored in there. Our nativity scene and all the lights that we used to use. So we still have all that, but a lot of them are through the years, the rodents get a hold of them, the squirrels eat the wires and.
So what's the ETA that you need to let us know what?
Well, if you, if you want us to do it, which we don't have a problem with that as long as we have enough notice. Because we'd rather do them when it's warm. You know?
That's a good point.
Late this month, early October.
It sounds like you want to do it too.
I personally, I love doing it. The guys, when it gets cold, nobody likes to.
Sure.
But especially when you're.
How many weeks do you need? If you started tomorrow, how many weeks do you need to come back to tell us what the budget's going to need to be above or below that 25,000?
Oh, we'd be, if we did it, it would be well below that. It would be four to 5,000.
Right. I just, but how long before you'll know what's broken, it needs to be replaced, et cetera?
Ooh, we'd have to go through probably 10 giant tubs and roll out each set of lights and.
I would, I would just say, just have them do it if, if it's less, right?
I know, but they're looking for direction on the money.
And we could, and we could, we could do without the trailer as well. You know, we can do it without the trailer. We could do, we could do the Christmas lights. I mean, that would be our contribution to the town that we love. That we don't know, that's us.
So by the next meeting, by the 15th, will you know what it's going to cost to replace the lights that are busted and what's salvageable?
If that's your direction, we could, I could, we could get on it tomorrow and start checking lights.
You, you figure out how. I just want to know so we can tell, tell staff.
That's up to Tom and Andrew to, they're the ones that give me directions. So I don't make the decisions.
Well, let me, let me ask you this because if you're going to drag all these out of these tubs and string them all out to find out what's wrong with them, and then you got to put them all back in there, right?
Basically what you do is you, you've got them in balls. So all, a hundred and, I think they're 99 feet each. So, and they're wrapped in a ball. And you can, you can basically plug it in and kind of sift through it a little bit and see if it's good. And if you see some dead lights in there somewhere, then, then you've got to unroll the whole thing. See if you can fix it, see if you can patch it and, and then pull it back up. So.
I just don't want to create.
There's probably.
No, no, that's my point.
Well, how about if we let Andrew and his team kind of work on this and we can, we can follow up on this?
Yep. Because if it becomes too much, we're not getting rid of Christmas. Right? And, and I'm, I'm assuming at some point you have to let the company know that we're using that they're scheduled.
So this is 26?
Oh, oh, it's already paid for for 25.
It's.
Okay.
We could.
I thought.
No, 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 no. We had canceled it for 2025 because we do need to have savings in our 2025 budget as well. But Andrew's going to reach out to the contractor tomorrow and see what our availability is. And then he will also work with our parks team to see what other solution we can come up with. And we can report back to you at the next meeting.
Okay, that sounds good.
Right. I can see council sitting in this room on a Saturday morning with a bunch of light bulbs.
Yeah, that's what it takes.
With, with chubby chase.
As far as the bottom trailer goes, I, I really have a hard time not providing that since it's already in the budget. Appreciate the goodwill and giving it back. But you've never had one and it's going to probably save somebody's ass one day from, from an injury. So let's just keep it in the budget.
Okay. This is just the preliminary. So when you see all the numbers come together, right? We're going to talk about this twice in November. So this is super helpful. So some of the areas of sacrifice, no summer flowers, potentially parks maintenance reduced. At this point, there would be no new public art rotation of the art pieces for the year, for 2026?
That costs money.
It costs money and time. So we're shifting Cassie from these types of projects into grant administration so that we can look at revenue generation. It's a thousand dollars per art piece for the artist as, as a stipend. And then we have no park improvement projects budgeted at all in 2026.
What other options about the, about the flowers? What other options are there? Can we get sponsorship or something like that?
That's, that's what we're going to look at is a volunteer program, whether it's a sponsorship. Someone sponsors, you know, one of the planting areas. A little sign, this is sponsored by so-and-so bank or whatever it may be.
And or do we, or do we, and/or do we also reduce the area that it would cover?
I didn't get that.
We, we could look at the, the amount of flower beds that we plant and as well as planters and hanging baskets. I mean, there's a number of things that we could still look at based on the volunteer and sponsorship program.
Thank you.
Finance, finance team is ready to adopt the beds right outside of town hall. We're on it. All right. So that's the general fund. We're going to move into the funds. So this is just an overview of each of the funds. As I've talked about before, there's nine funds and the revenues are specific and must be used for specific purposes. So what we've identified in expenditures are for the legal uses of those funds. So the capital projects fund, these are taxes from the use tax. So we are expecting about a million dollars in revenue. And then we will, it's budgeted like this. We always budget about a million dollars for the curb gutter sidewalk and asphalt repairs. Again, there's no public works facility. There's no police facility and there's no money for Jackson Creek Parkway. For Jackson Creek Parkway to happen, we have to find a designated revenue source. Town has inadequate funds, any kind of a loan, any kind of a lease to move forward with this project. Funds are just not available. And the worrisome part now becomes the loss of the so back we added that revenue in, the 6.5 million that we're going to lose those grants. Because we just don't have the money.
We don't need to have that buy?
We don't have, I think we're coming towards the end of this year.
Yeah, we've, we've been in conversations with FHU to see if there's some way that we can start spending some of the grant money in order to meet that, but we need to have more conversation with them. But it, we've already seen CDOT already take back some of the funding that they gave us. So it's likely that that could continue if it doesn't look like this project is, has a way to move forward.
So at the end of 2025, so the fund balance that you're seeing includes the, the Jackson Creek Parkway grants. So 7.9 million at the end of 25 and at the end of 26, 8.3 million. For 2A, the 2A fund, we're anticipating about 2.8 million in revenue. Have about 8.8 million in expenses. This is because the water, the 2A fund has reserves. And so you see some large capital outlays for 6.5 million expected in 26. So at the end of, oh, so, sorry, for the highlights, these are the projects. You see another tank of renewable waters. This is a designation and direct council to put $2 million aside for a potential renewable water source. And every year we'll need to make the 1.272 bond payment for the next 18, 19 years. So that will come out of 2A. So for the reserves, at the end of 2024, because some of the projects didn't move forward, 4.3. And if all the projects move forward, you'll be at about 1.1. For the police fund, we're anticipating about 1.9 million in revenue. Expenditure is about 2.1. Again, 2F is specific for the police and can only be used for specific purposes and has been carefully budgeted to comply with that, that initiative. Some highlights, three additional vehicles will be purchased. There's a handgun transition, upgrading some rifles. You can see some other health screening and increased training opportunities. So the reserve is expected to be about 250,000 at the end of 2026. This is the economic development, about 112,000 in revenue. This comes from business licenses. We have seen an increase. We are bringing in more business licenses, we think partially due to sales tax because we're now collecting it locally and we're able to let businesses know they also need to get a business license. And then we plan to expend about 92,000. Some of the community events, concerts in the park, Independence Day, tree lighting, marketing. And some travel and training was eliminated from this fund. Reserve remains low. We spend most of the money that we bring in each year under this fund. Traffic impact fees, 100,000 in fees. We usually try to spend that every year. This is related to, to traffic, street improvements. We try to spend most of that. We'll probably have about 400,000 at the end of 2026. Storm drain, user fees. So we're anticipating about 26,000. There are some reserves, so spending about 100,000. You'll notice the larger amount in 25. That was the ARPA money that was designated for some storm drain projects. The challenge is coming forward is that we have more storm drain projects than we have monies for. One that Public Works has identified is the culvert at Dirty Woman Creek. There, this fund is going to need help from the general fund at some point in the future. We have a storm drain plan underway right now. This is one of the things I've been highlighting of concern that when there are issues with the storm drain, the town is responsible. And so this may require some investment from the general fund in the future. And none of that is accounted for. And so we usually spend that down with a reserve of about 300,000 at the end of 26. This is the water fund. We're anticipating about 4.5 million in revenue. Spending about 5.2 million. There's a variety of projects that are proposed in the water fund. Rehab of a tank. You can see the list here. Build a new tank, construct some, some pipelines, some other things. With an ending fund balance of 8.3 million. So remember, this is specifically for water. It can only be used for water expenses. And this is the park fees. They've gone down significantly. Right now this year, we, the budget is 40,000, but we've only brought in about 4,000 to date. So we dropped that revenue down significantly for 26. The capital outlay, this is the heart of Monument and those monies are grants. And so they're in the budget, but we do plan, hopefully spend that this year. And therefore there would be basically no fund balance at the end of 26. Conservation Trust, this is the lottery money, so just under 100,000. This is designated for parks and open space with a small reserve at the end of 26. So this is your overall budget. So this, all funds is 25.1 million. And your expenditures are 32.1 million, but we are using reserves, especially in the water fund. So even though that looks out of balance, it's okay to use reserves from 2A and from the water fund. So this is fine. So again, these are some highlights. We've been through them. I just wanted to list the things that, that we've already included so that you're aware of some decisions that have been made and some items that are included or not included in the budget. We've been through this list. I just wanted to have it in one list somewhere. Again, these are some of the options we've already talked about. We've talked about all of these. We would take some direction with regards to employee benefits if there's things that you wanted us to look at. And as well as code enforcement, we know that that's been an issue for the council. It's very limited and reactive only with the current staffing levels. And then I thought this was important. So you have. So you have the town manager put a citizen service levels advisory committee together. I presented a very condensed version of what I just presented to you, to the committee. And this is their initial feedback. And so we'll continue to have discussions with them, but these are thoughts. These are unedited and, and nothing has been followed up on, but I wanted you to know what their thoughts were. They did acknowledge the challenge of layoffs, but commended that these, and commended that they're necessary and that we have the courage to do them. They talked about closing Monument Lake. They talked about charging for Monument Lake and or parking. They would like to see law enforcement fully funded. They think that the council should focus on must haves, not nice to haves. They would like to see us identify more community based projects, exactly what you're talking about. Are there opportunities for people to adopt certain things or so that the community is more engaged? They would like you to evaluate or like us to evaluate employee benefits. They would like us to sell the Gold Canyon property. They understand that there's challenges with that, but they think that we need to cut through the red tape and get that done so that we can add that to our reserves. And they feel that there is a strong need to focus on enhancing revenues because we cannot cut our way out of this structural deficit. So if you have additional thoughts, this would be a great time to share them. I really appreciate what you've shared already. It's been very helpful. We'll continue to have communication and work with the citizens service levels advisory committee. I already heard that you'd like the three nonprofits to present to them. If there's anything you'd like to send back to them for discussion and analysis, I would need to know that this evening. The next draft will come to you in November, the first meeting in November, where you see the numbers and we'll go into much more detail. The final draft will come to you in the second meeting in November. Still opportunities to discuss and make changes and the budget will, should be adopted by the first meeting in December.
I think we need to figure out how to raise revenue, which we've, you know, talked about, charging, parking for the lake if it pans out. And I know there's challenges with that as well. All this stuff has got challenges, so I get that. Taking our, our property taxes back up to whatever level we can get those to. Trying to get the lodging tax back on the ballot to help the parks out. And, um, you know, any other types of, of fees, which we're, we're looking at all those, you know, those rate fees will help to some degree. And I, I am in agreement with the Gold Canyon property and I, I think we need to lift some of the restrictions that the planning commission has been putting on it. So I'm in, I'm in agreement and I'm on that committee, as you know. So, you know, I've got a little bit of the inside scoop here. But, uh, I mean, that's what, that's what we have to do, right? So. And, and you've been, yeah, I'm not going to get, I'm just giving you kudos because truly I, I mean, it's from the bottom of my heart. You, you really helped bring a lot of things to light. Thank you for that and thank you for running that committee too. And, uh, you know, we'll work our way through this.
We will, thank you very much.
Curious how closing Monument Lake would save us money.
No maintenance, no, no public safety, no. Yeah, and I don't, I don't, it's not a vetted thought. It's just they were throwing out ideas to challenge us. And there are grants associated with running that lake. And so it's complicated, but they were, they're a very thoughtful group. In fact, we have two members with us tonight, very thoughtful. And so it's, a lot of it is just spurring us and sometimes, you know, our own barriers that we have and our own sacred cows. And so I just wanted to reflect everything that they mentioned.
Is, is there also a list that shows what your or staff meetings have determined amongst yourselves? What you believe are must haves and nice to haves?
I feel like that we've, we've really presented that to you tonight. This is after lots and lots of conversation with our leadership team. We've really presented what we feel like are must haves and nice to haves. Things that we've kept in the budget, we feel are necessary for our organization.
So every, yeah, this, so this is everything. There's nothing else that's kind of like on a napkin or something that was an afterthought or anything like that?
No, this is everything.
Can I add something to that?
I think they've really dug in deep.
Yeah, no.
So I totally agree. I think our budgets are what we need to have, but we also gave capital improvement projects to finance, which was kind of pie in the sky. If we had all the money, we would do this, this and this.
That will, so the capital improvement project budget will come to you as well. That's under preparation now, but it'll be fairly thin. But it also helps in impact fees and other things. So that's just not ready for presentation tonight.
Thank you. But the risk of sounding redundant, I echo everything that Mayor Pro Tem King said. Thank you, thank you, thank you. In addition to that, you're going to hear something that you didn't hear before necessarily, but I did a little, um, small. Query of people in the neighborhood, in my neighborhood. And I gave them parks, public works and police, the three Ps. And I said, give them to me in priority, in terms of your priority. And the first thing out of their mouth was, do not give up the police. So, and then they kind of went down there and I just listened because I wanted to hear some of this from the people that are around me and live. And pretty much it's been covered here. So I encourage everyone in this room to buy a lottery ticket. And when you do, all of this becomes moot.
Powerball tickets, not lottery tickets.
Yeah.
So while I totally agree with what Mayor Pro Tem King said with the thank yous, and it probably does not get reflected on my face. Because of how ticked off I am. That it, it's come down to this. And I'm not going to say here what I'm thinking. I, I've thought several times I was going to pick up my laptop and smash it against the floor. So the work that you and the staff are doing is pretty extraordinary, bringing this to light. And the transparency, I really, really appreciate. That said, I want somebody to look into doing a risk assessment on your council being able to volunteer on some things. Some of us have expertises that could be lending hands at certain projects that would not cost the town money. I know that I could probably spend weeks with Will to get things done and I have the time to do it. I don't need administrative access to anything, but there could be other things related to IT that I could help. But previously I was told there was liability. I don't understand why, but I would like it to be investigated that if we are going to volunteer, it, it meets some. You know, legal or insurance, so, so the town is not at risk. And that we're given the opportunity to do it to help because, you know, you, you guys need help.
Just think that outstanding job, first off, thank you. I will say that police and public works, I think are the two most important things. And they, they complement one another because they need one another. And, and I think they work well together as well. But, I mean, public works for overall, you know, health and wellness for the residents to utilize the sidewalks, the roadways. Police for safety, security. I think that those are paramount that we have to take a lookout and try to protect as best possible. And that's where we're going to get most of the bang for the buck. I'm not sure how the other council members feel.
Done anything? Marco's still online?
I agree with, I agree with what Ken said about both of those departments.
Council member Furito did have to step out, but he did say he would like to look at increased revenue through the mill levy increase as well.
I don't think we have much of a choice because it's something that we can do. But I do want to get that valid initiative looked at again. Want to make sure that people are, uh, re-surveyed, their acceptance and understanding of it. So that we, when we go to the initiative, it is worded correctly. I don't think it was not worded correctly to begin with, but if the, if the survey results come back as positive, then we should proceed. And I would like it to be a joint effort with Triview. Maybe they will help us with the expenses and with the understanding that since we would be splitting the revenue as capital expenditures for the parks across the entire town. That this should be a joint venture in both the survey as well as the. Those costs as well as sharing of the revenue generated from it.
They're about to tell everyone else they have to leave.
We don't. Can we do that at town hall? When, when the meetings are going too long, someone sits in the back with a giant bell to get us out, right? So that's the, that's the, as far as rape, and then as far as the parks go. Let us know how we can help from a technology review kind of thing. Because I've already started looking into several companies that have both a QR code kind of on our system. Where you show up and you scan your phone and it's a dollar or $3 or $5, whatever it is. And that should attach to the overflow parking too, for the usage of the lake.
Now, we've already done some extensive research on what our options are for parking systems. Be looking more into that.
Okay, cool. Anybody else, anybody else from staff? You guys have done a phenomenal frigging job. No, we'll call this meeting done, workshop done until the 15th. Thank you.
Thank you.